All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Richie Ratzak, the Assistant Managing Editor of The Record Journal. We're back again with another candidate forum tonight. We have the Meriden Board of Education candidates. It's a large group here, so we'll be doing a little bit of a change from the format that we've had in the previous nights, where each of the candidates will be giving an opening statement, and then we'll switch to answers by party, so that we can get to a few more questions because of the number of candidates. Having everyone answer every single question would just take quite a bit of time, and we wouldn't have as much time to get to different questions. So, speaking of the questions, the questions, some of them came from the newsroom, and some of them came from our Voices Initiative, where we asked voters what they want the candidates to be talking about as they compete for their votes. You could submit questions for upcoming candidate forums by going to myrecordjournal.com/voices. And for those watching live on Facebook, I'll be keeping an eye on the comments, and if you have a question for the candidates, leave it in the comment section, and I'll try to get to them as time allows. So, we'll start off by going in ballot order for opening statements. So, we'll start with Stephen O'Donnell.
Okay, Rich, did you say there is a time limit on this? I mean, I've got a little prepared statement here.
Yeah, we're trying to stick to one-minute opening statements. You should see the little timer.
Okay. Well, my name is Stephen O'Donnell. I'm a living and practicing in Meriden for the last 30 years or so. I did have a student go through the Meriden School System graduating from Platte in 2014. Business owner in Meriden for the last 11 years, practicing for 30 years, and on the Board of Education for the last 12 years. During my time, served as the Vice President, Secretary, served on multiple and chaired multiple committees, including Finance and Policy, as well as the Contracts Committee. Over the past 12 years during my time, the Public Schools have instituted all-day kindergarten, universal breakfast and lunch for all students in all grades, and continue to create highly-quality specialized programs for all students. We continue to do this, and we hope to continue in the future. We also put two new high schools up, and if re-elected, I will continue to work with other members of the Board and administrative team to continue to provide safe schools and a challenging curriculum for all students. We would like to see continuing improvement in the graduation rates, as well as continued scoring on standardized tests and the other assessment tools. And most importantly, encourage parental involvement, as that's the most important thing with students' success. Thank you.
All right, and then we'll go over to Alan.
Hi. My name's Al Pronovo, and I'm a candidate for the Board of Education. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the RJ and others who are running this forum and giving us the opportunity to share our views and our candidacy. I'm a lifelong Meriden resident. I've attended Meriden Public School System K through 12. I have four grandsons who are currently attending Meriden Schools. I have served almost five years on the board. COVID was a huge problem for us, as well as it was for all of you, and certainly for the country and the world. It created a need for all hands on deck here. We kept our schools open for in-person learning, and the parents could choose. I will continue, hopefully, with your vote to ensure a safe learning environment for students, staff, and community. I'll hold students to high expectations for academics and behavior and the fiscal responsibility on your standard difference between wants and needs. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And then we'll go over to Charles.
This is going. Thank you to The Record Journal for offering this forum to the candidates. Thank you to The Record Journal for offering this forum to the candidates and all the viewers, both live and at a later time, to take time out of their day to listen to all of our thoughts. My name is Charlie Johnson. I'm seeking my first term on the Meriden Board of Education. I'm a fourth-generation Meriden resident, husband and father, with a decade's worth of experience working in colleges and universities in Connecticut as a Development Officer currently at Yale University, and I'm also a product of the very public schools we all hope to represent on the Board of Education. In my career, I have fundraised for scholarship opportunities, the arts, STEM, social and emotional learning, research, and more. Through this work, I believe I have a unique perspective on the role of education and how that experience can translate to a case of quality education. I look forward to sharing my thoughts and ideas with you throughout this event and hope to work with the children, families, teachers, on the Board of Education with one eye on current issues and another on long-sustained improvements. Thank you.
All right, and then next is Siobhan. Oh, you're muted.
So sorry, let's try this again. Hi, thank you for having me here. My name is Siobhan Maloney Bazanet. I am a lifelong resident of Meriden. I have two, I'm a proud mom of two daughters. I am a product of the Meriden Public Schools and Vocational, as well as my two daughters. I am a long-term substitute instructor at Vinyl Tech. I'm currently teaching civics and government. Let's see, I, in my, I've been on the Board of Education for several months now. I have gotten to visit a number of schools, and I absolutely enjoy it. If elected, I want to continue to be able to go in there and meet the students, administrators, and just getting to hear their stories and see all the hard work that they're doing. It's been, it's been an awesome run so far. So, if elected, I continue to keep on doing so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then next we'll go over to, am I getting that name right? Oh, we can't hear you. Nope, still not hearing anything. We can come back.
Not too far away from my partner.
All right.
Hi, my name is Emileka Lopez Riddle, but I'm known for Annie. I was born in Puerto Rico but raised here in Meriden. I am a wife to a wonderful husband, Darius, and a mom to two beautiful kids who are actually a part of the Meriden Public School Systems. My kids are the reason and motivation why I take in this journey, and my goal here is to bring a new diverse idea to advocate for parents, for teachers, and to continue to support the future of our kids here in Meriden. So, I look forward to all of you supporting us, and I thank The Record Journal for supporting this.
All right, great. And then over to Kim.
Hello.
Okay.
Oh. Kim Pandiani is next.
Okay.
Kim, okay. I'm Kimmy.
I know.
How you doing? My name is Kim Carbon Pandiani. I'm glad to share a little bit about myself and why I'm running for the opportunity to continue to represent the families and students of Meriden on the school board. I'm a lifelong Meriden resident, a homeowner, and a product of the Meriden School System, a graduate of Quinnipiac University. I'm a very proud parent of three terrific kids who have excelled in our schools. I have a very vested interest in our public education system, as my youngest is a sixth grader at Edison Middle School. As a stay-at-home parent, I feel fortunate to have the necessary time to dedicate to this position, and I thank The Record Journal for allowing each of us the opportunity to participate in tonight's discussion.
Right, and then over to Nikki.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Nikki Hayes. I have been living in Meriden for the past 17 years. I'm a wife and mother of four kids who are all in Meriden Public Schools. I have a middle schooler, I have a fourth grader, and I have two, and I have twins who are in kindergarten. It's because of all of them why I wanted to run for the Board of Ed. And also, my background, I worked for the American Federation of Teachers of Connecticut, of which I have been doing that work for 19 years, and I feel that that gives me a unique voice and opportunity, because I can, I know what's going on nationwide educationally, as well as statewide, and can see where we can continue to make strides against other districts, what's working, what's not working. And that's what I feel that I will be able to bring to the table, as well as I'm the Education Chair for the past seven years for the Meriden Wailing for NAACP. And I've been really involved in the community here in Meriden for the 17 years that I've been here, but especially as my kids have gotten older through them playing sports for the Y, as well as my daughter and son being a part of the Meriden Raiders. So, that's just one of the things of why I feel that I would be great to add a voice to the Board of Education.
All right, thank you. And then over to Sheri.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sheri Amity, and I'm a current member of the Board of Education. I serve on the Policy, Finance, and Curriculum Committees. I'm an 18-year resident of Meriden. I have two children who went partially through part of Meriden Children's School, I mean, Meriden Public Schools here. And when I moved here, I knew I had to get involved in the community, because I was going to raise children here and educate my kids here. So, what I did was I got involved with as many parenting advocate and leadership programs that I could. I completed the PLTI program, the Parent C program, the Yukon pep program. And from there, I was introduced to Meriden Children's First. I've been a member of Meriden Children's First for about five years, working with the kids, the most needed kids in our community here. I'm the current Vice President of the organization. And working with children is just a passion of mine, especially when it comes to education. I believe that all children deserve a high-quality education, and I feel that here in Meriden, we are providing high-quality education to our students. And my hope is to continue my work on the Board, representing the families of Meriden, and doing all I can do to ensure that all kids receive that best education they possibly can. Thank you, and thank you for having this forum this evening.
All right, thank you. And well, thanks for all the candidates for joining us tonight. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Record Journal reporter Mike Gagny, who's going to be kicking out the questions. And since the ballot order started with the Democratic candidate, we'll with the Republican candidate to start off with the questions.
Good evening, everyone. So, this first question, we'll look at graduation rates. So, going back to the class of 2011, that year, 69.8% of Meriden High School students, Platte Maloney, graduated within four years. By 2020, 85% of students had graduated on time, according to public data that's reported by the State Department of Education. However, during that time, the city's college entry rate remained relatively unchanged. A little bit more than 50% of high school students who graduate each year are going on to college. So, the question here is, what can the Board of Education do for that 46% to 48% of high school graduates who do not pursue a post-secondary education right out of high school? Should the school district consider expanding its offering of career training program for students, besides what is offered at Wilcox, which is still attended by MPS students as part of CT tech system?
Hi, my understanding is that the, last year, we had a 92% graduation rate. At any rate, that's the facts and figures that we have. We do have the Wilcox capability, but we're always open for other ideas as needs change and our students' requirements change.
All right, anyone else want to jump in on that side with the remaining time?
Yes, I would like to add a few things. We did receive information as early as yesterday with regard to verifying it was 92% for last year graduation rate. We do have at least 10% of our population that does enter into the military. We also have students who go directly into careers right out of high school. I don't know if you've accounted for that at all, Mike.
Just to clarify, the 92%, are you talking about the class of 2021, because the question talked about the class of 2020?
My apologies, that was for 2021?
Okay, because that data is not reported by the State Department of Ed yet, so that has not been released publicly, anyway.
I used for your graduation rate, number 92%.
With Democrats, I'd like to weigh in now.
Please.
Sure, I can go. I think that we've, we've seen a steady progression pretty much every year with the graduation rates higher, and I do believe that's in part to do a few different things. We are offering more rigorous curriculum, and that is pushing kids to do a little bit better. The fact that they're not all going to college, it's hard to explain, but I guess some kids just are not made out to go to college. I mean, we are having, almost all kids are taking SATs, PSATs that we pay for to try to promote them to go on to the next, next level, but it doesn't always work. And I do think that you will see, as we continue to promote the college credit that we're getting at the high schools now, we should see more people going into the college ranks.
Can I add something to that, or are we out of time?
We're out of time, thank you. But this next question will go to Democrats, and it also pertains to high school. Starting in the fall of 2022, Maloney and Platte, along with other public high schools across the state, will be required to offer an elective Black and Latinos course of study. The purpose of that course of studies, according to the state, is to provide students with a better understanding of the African-American, Latino contributions to US history, society, economy, and culture. In Meriden, how well-equipped do you believe cities' high schools are to offer such courses? And do you believe that the Meriden Public Schools has already taken steps to provide students with that understanding through its existing courses and programs? Please explain your answer.
I would weigh in if you can. So, so in the, in the high schools, I think it is important for the students to see themselves in the curriculum. So, teaching about Black and Latino studies is extremely important. We know that there was an increase in hiring of teachers from different backgrounds and more diverse backgrounds. I think that's important, but I think it's also only the first step. I think we should strive to find creative ways to attract quality teachers from diverse backgrounds.
And I just wanted to chime in as well. I think that is very important, and we also know that Meriden Public Schools had already started taking steps these past few years, because they've been focusing on culturally responsive teaching. And I know that they've been doing different courses. They've made sure to hire more teachers of color as well. I know this past year, they hired 30% more teachers of color, which is very important, because kids need to see themselves within the workforce. So, those are lots of strides, and also, they have the affinity group here in Meriden. So, these are all the steps that we know the Meriden Public Schools are taking and that they will continue to take. So, that will just add to, you know, the Black and Latino studies being offered next year. And I believe that the teachers here would be very qualified.
All right, and then over to the Republican side.
We try to be responsive to the ever-changing needs of our students, and certainly with the cross-section of our students in the student body. The more cases that we, or the more classes and subject matter that we can give that meet those needs, obviously, that's the best thing to do for the student body.
I would like to say that over the last nine years, at least nine years ago, I know that the Meriden Board of Education has really made it a focus and a priority as, and what, as one of our superintendent's goals when it comes to minority hiring. I do recall when I first got on the Board, Donald Green, Jason Teal from the NAACP, and I think Lou Brock went down to Howard University to actually do in-person, added in-person job fair. They came back, and they said it was really a remarkable experience. And, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can to build up the ranks. We value diversity in this community. I think that's why we all live here. We celebrated, I was at Lincoln Middle School today at their Hispanic Heritage celebration, where Superintendent Benigni was actually salsa dancing on stage. So, we're making great strides. Sorry.
That's all right.
But Republicans are taking the next question. The, this addresses the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, and we know that the pandemic has had an impact on students, families, and educators, and it's been significant. Early data shows that learning loss has occurred, and there has been evidence that students have also experienced socio-emotional learning setbacks as well. The district is receiving a significant influx, more than $20 million of federal COVID relief aid in American Rescue Plan funds, a portion of which is intended to address the pandemic's impact on students' learning and well-being. In your view, how should the Meriden Public Schools invest those dollars? And I would recommend that Siobhan answers this question, because she hasn't responded yet.
I think you're still unmuted.
We are trying to beef up this support system with the staff, with the support staff, some, with staff workers to have extra support for the students with paras, tutors, to have the extra help in the classrooms, to have the support staff for the students to be able to go to talk to if they need that. Thank you.
There's 20 seconds left.
Just some other ways that we've already budgeted to spend some of the SIR money. We've put a significant amount of money in our infrastructure, in our buildings. I'm sure you're probably aware that we've invested about $2 million in outdoor learning spaces, pavilions at all 13 schools. I see your time is up, so I want to be respectful.
All right, thank you for that. And then over to the Democratic side.
Yes, to echo what Siobhan and Kim said, that money we've really invested into students and their socio-emotional support. With the funding, we've hired climate specialists, social workers, school psychologists, we've middle school counselors, high school counselors. So, we've put, a lot of that money is being invested into the socio-emotional well-being of our students. And also, at Maloney, they have recently created a new club where the kids are addressing social, socio-emotional issues that are going on with the students there.
So, 15 seconds, if anyone else wants to chime in?
Sure, I would just add that in addition to the infrastructure being implemented in the new staff positions, it's important at this time to think creatively, partner with other aspects of social-emotional learning experts at our colleges and universities that work on this research and have cutting-edge information to share with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question goes to Democrats first. The Meriden Public Schools consistently ranks among school districts statewide with the lowest per pupil expenditures. Do you believe that the city needs to invest additional dollars into the school system, and how would you advocate for those dollars?
This was to the Democrats.
Yes, Steve or any of them, would you like to take this question?
Yeah, I can go ahead. I think that we've, truthfully, yes, we've had a difficult time with expenditures, per pupil expenditures, because Meriden is not a high-income community, and we get allocations from the city based on what they can afford. Certainly, we would like to do more with more funding, but we've done very well with limited funding that we've had, and we've been very fortunate to have state and federal funding that in many times has supplanted and helped provide, provide us with additional funds to start new programs and do different things with. So, I think we've been very well off considering.
But the Board of Ed needs to ask for more funding, most importantly, and see what the city says.
All right, and then over to the Republican side.
In fact, each budget season, which is in the spring, we put forth our case in asking for more money than we had the previous year. And in the last eight years, we've only received roughly anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000 of additional money. That was two years ago. Obviously, we could do more if we had more funding. The issue really boils down to the difference, again, wants and needs. When you only have so much money, as you're in your household budgets, you can't buy steak if you only have a hamburger budget, and that's where we're pretty well locked in. When you have a zero-based balanced budget, year after year after year, you have to make some hard choices, and you try to make that convenient for the current needs of the students. Thank you.
And if I can, I know we're out of time, but I just wanted to add that we believe that we should always, that money should always be invested into education, and we are thankful for our partners like Nellie May and the Dalio and others. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Republicans, you guys are taking the next question. So, earlier this month, the Connecticut Office of the Child Advocate released findings of its systems investigation of the Meriden Public Schools, looking at the denial of in-person learning for at least 21 students with disabilities who were unable to wear masks for a period of time throughout last fall and winter. The findings determine the Meriden Public Schools' district mask mandate to be in violation of federal laws that guarantee students the right to free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. So, this finding is reported now before other state agencies who are reviewing those findings for possible further action. And based on what you know about the OCA report, pandemic scenarios reported by local and statewide media, do you feel the Meriden Public Schools and local health officials handled these cases appropriately? And are you confident the district will appropriately address the lost learning and socio-emotional impacts that may have resulted from those involuntary remote learning placements? I know a lot.
Yep, I'd like to handle this. Yep, I'd like to handle this. You know, when this came to our attention with regard to the OCA's final report. It's our responsibility to wait for the State Department of Education final. Ruling on it. If they do require us to take action, of course, we will do so appropriately.
In addition. Patty Sullivan, our one of our. Central Office Assistant Superintendents. Jumped through hoops trying to make those folks that we felt and the Port of Health felt would be better served by staying home. Because they couldn't tolerate wearing a mask. They weren't left without some support. Thank you.
Right, and then over to the Democratic side.
I I too have to, you know, echo with Kim and Alan just said, we do have to wait for the state to make their final decision before we can. Before we know what steps we have to take. Down the road with these children, but we we did have to follow what the state and local health departments. Were saying at the time, but if we do have to make changes in this, we definitely will based on the final outcome.
I definitely echo what my co partner here Sheri says. I think we need to do a better job to find ways. To support our students with disabilities.
I would just make one other comment to follow up on that. During the entire pandemic, we were as a as a city and as a as a school system, we were following the local health department officials. Which were being directed by the state health department and the governor's office. So the the mask mandate was a state mandate and we did the best we could with what we, you know, with with the abilities that we had to accommodate everybody.
All right, Mike, and we're coming up on just put on times, we do one more question and then we'll go into closing statements.
Okay, so. This last question will look at Edison Middle School. This will go to. Democrats. So obviously, we know that Edison reopened this year as a Meriden Public Schools. From building, but for the last two decades, it operated as a interdistrict magnet school. And according to the state of Connecticut, you know, the goal of interdistrict magnet schools is to address racial and economic isolation. And we have to wonder, was Edison kind of effective in that goal in your view?
This will go to the Democratic side first.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mike, could you repeat that last part again of the question?
Well, absolutely. As far as Edison Magnet School, do you feel it was effective in addressing racial and economic isolation, which is the purpose of the interdistrict magnet school program? And offering a quality education?
Well, I definitely feel that. Thomas Edison. Offered a very quality education. I can't necessarily say that it definitely helped. Because with the the racial part of it, for the simple fact, it was still a lottery to get in. And it was a lottery of the parents who put in for that particular school. So whenever it's a lottery system, you still have numbers that don't really. That aren't really equitable. So. There's that with that. But the things that Edison offered and that Edison even now offers because how they were set up, I think is great for for Meriden.
Right, and then over to the Republican side.
You know, when we talk about equity, I just want to remind the viewing audience. This discussion's gone back for about eight years now, so I just need to hit on some of the things we've been able to accomplish as a cohesive board. We've eliminated tracking, ensured courses are rigorous in college level. We've transitioned from traditional to student centered learning, which really has changed. The whole dynamic within the classroom, certainly from when I was there. We've opened access to all courses, including honors courses, advanced placement courses, early college experience courses. Students in middle school now have access to high school classes. Our high school students can earn college credits through AP and ECE offerings. They even have an opportunity to earn an associate's degree while they're earning their high school diploma because of our partnership with Middlesex. Just some of the things I wanted to highlight.
Great, and with that, we're just a little bit beyond the a lot of time, but we'll head into the the closing statements and we'll go back to the ballot order. So we'll start with Steve.
Well, to close, I would say that the district in general has been. Progressing forward very well for the last twelve years that I've been on it and with the current administration in that's been. At the Board of Ed building, I think a strong administrative team is the key to success. The Board of Education, though, we. Do have the superintendent as our employee, we do not have a lot to do with the day to day runnings of the system. I think that we want to continue to push for, again, parental involvement is important. We want to push for a rigorous curriculum for the students. Which would promote higher graduation rates and more more college attendance. But we all know not every child is a is a college student and we need to prepare those kids for whatever career they go into as well.
All right, and then over to Alan.
Hear me?
Yes.
Once again, thank you to the Record Journal for giving us all this opportunity to make our make our state or make our. Stand to the voting public. My issue has been to keep costs under control and to expand and or modify opportunities for our kids. It's opportunities. In our land of opportunities that will make America strong going forward. Myself and the other incumbents. Democrats included are ready and willing. To continue providing these opportunities for our students. The incumbents are now battle seasoned to deal with new disruptions. Come if they may, and of course, we still are going to be dealing with the COVID aftermath. I believe we we have demonstrated a commitment to do what we can to provide these opportunities to our students. We understand our the trust that parents have put in us and we don't take that lightly. Our students, after all, are Meriden's future. Thank you.
Hey, and then over to Charlie.
Thanks again to Record Journal for providing this forum. I'm proud of my education in Meriden, but we can always do more and we can always do better. We must ensure that all students have equitable learning opportunities, that teachers and school personnel have the support to do their jobs effectively, and that all members of our district remain safe. Board of Education needs someone who can and will advocate for all these groups, work to receive more funding and use that funding in more ways that are efficient. And productive. The work that this board has done with their budget is is honorable, but one hundred sixty seven out of one hundred sixty nine is not acceptable. We need more members, new board members who are willing to fight for our kids, for our teachers and for our families. A quality school district is the hallmark of a great city. Let's work together to get there. Thank you.
And then over to Siobhan.
Thank you. I want to thank you guys again, the Record Journal, for having me here this evening. I have to say, my time on the Meriden Board of Education these several months has been amazing. I love going to the schools, getting to talk to the parents. The students, just seeing the pride and how proud they are of being in their schools and listening to the stories. And them just walking down the hallways with them, showing me their artwork and just being excited to be at their games. It's just been, it's it's been wonderful and I look forward to continue to doing so and celebrating our incredible merit in public schools, the many opportunities it has to offer. And even just being a product of the Meriden Public Schools. I have always been involved within my school with my my daughters and I just really want all students to have the same positive experience that I did. With the Meriden Public Schools and vocational and just I want them to have the same opportunities and experiences that I did. And thank you for having me here again.
All right, so thanks for being here. And then over to Annie.
Hi, sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I would like to first apologize for all my technical difficulties tonight. I want to thank the Record Journal for taking the time, the viewers for taking the time to listen to us. It's very evident that all of us here are here for one thing, and that's for the children. I want to take the time, not only to thank the Record Journal, but all the parents that are out there listening to this event. I think if we are seeking change, we need to be the first ones to step up and make the change. Change is necessary here in Meriden and just as Charlie mentioned, we are products of the American Public School Systems. But we definitely know there's a bigger opportunity here. And we look forward to seeing all of you on November second. Please go out and vote. It starts with us and we thank you.
And then over to Kim.
Thanks again for the opportunity tonight. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the successes you've heard about. This evening did not happen in a vacuum. The healthy partnerships that the board has cultivated over the last decade. Made it possible for our district to provide in person learning. Continuously over the last eighteen months, our unions all came to the table back in March of twenty twenty to hash out how we could safely. Offer education in a safe environment for everybody in the building. We are outpour outperforming districts. We never came close to performing on our smarter balanced assessments. We adapted indoor musicals for outdoor performances during a pandemic when other communities were shuttered. More summer program offerings than ever in our district's history. All sports and music programs and clubs in operation and thriving throughout the last year. Our partnerships with our trade schools are allowing students to walk out of high school with an employable with an employable skill set. Thanks again for your time. I look forward to your continued support.
And then onto Nikki.
Sorry, forgot I was muted. Just want to say thank you again to the Record Journal for giving us us all this opportunity. To speak on the issues concerning education here in Meriden. For myself, once again, you know, I may be new to this, but I really feel that I could add a lot. To the Meriden Board of Education. City of Meriden continues to make significant progress in education. And I believe in it, or else I wouldn't have picked Meriden as a place to live, especially with how diverse Meriden is. And all the teachers, the teacher staff, support staff, parent educators. They're all a part of the community here, which is another reason why. I feel Meriden is a great place to be educated at and to be a part of. And I believe in it. I believe in Meriden. So just want to thank you all again to have this opportunity.
And then onto Sheri.
Thank you. Thank you very much again for hosting this forum. And I would like to. Just do everything possible to continue my seat on the Board of Education. I'm very proud of the work that the board has done. We managed to keep children safe during a pandemic and that was. That was a collaborative effort on all of our board members. And I really would like to, you know, the Board of Ed to continue pushing quality education on our students. We have so much to offer and I don't think a lot of parents know what we have to offer. Because we have a lot to offer to all students here in Meriden and I would like the collaboration with parents so that they could. Learn everything that Meriden Public Schools have to offer. Meriden Public Schools educated my two sons and they came out with a great education that I greatly appreciate. I will continue to support all the teachers, the administrators in all the schools. And that's it. And thank you very much and I wish everybody the best of luck.
All right, well, that's a wrap. Thanks to all of the candidates for joining us here tonight. It's important for voters to hear directly from the candidates to help make informed decisions when they go out and vote. And we do encourage everyone to go out and vote in the coming election. So thanks again for taking the time on a Friday evening to come and be part of the the forum here. So again, and everyone out there, thanks for watching. Have a great weekend and be safe. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Happy Friday.